Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is the July 15th regular meeting of the Stonington Planning and Zoning Commission. Welcome to all. Let the record reflect that meeting was called to order at 7:00 P. M. I believe we have all regular members present this evening, so there's no appointment of alternates. What's the commission's pleasure on the minutes of June 17?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes for meeting number 1797 from June 17, 2025, as submitted.
Motion to approve number 1797 by Ryan. Thank you, Ryan. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I'll abstain. I did review the video, but I wasn't actually.
Do we have three votes?
Yeah.
Yep, okay. Fine, the motion passes. Minutes are approved. June 25th, minutes of June 25th?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for meeting number 1799 from June 25, 2025, as submitted.
Motion by Ryan to approve. Thank you, Ryan. Is there a second?
A second motion.
Thank you very much, Gary. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes, chair will side. Public comment? This is an opportunity for anyone in the audience to address the commission on any matter that's not on the agenda, again, not on the agenda. So if you see the item on the agenda below, this isn't the time to stand up. If there's another item that you'd like to discuss with us, you're free to come up and identify yourself and take podium. Hearing none, we'll move on. Correspondents, Clifton?
None.
No correspondence, move to report staff.
None.
Commission, we have one item, draft request for funding. Clifton, you want to explain that?
Sure. Two or three meetings ago, Lynn made the request during the commission comment to develop a request for funding to go to the Board of Finance to develop architectural design guidelines for the town. I didn't have the time to develop it for the last meeting, but I did for this one. So I provided a draft memo that would go to the Board of Finance. The intent for putting this together is for next year's funding request when we start the budget cycle in the new year. This would accompany the planning departments' form of ask, and then we have a SIP line item dedicated to this project. And this is basically, if the commission was okay with it, then I would just include this as part of that request.
Thank you. Any comments on the draft?
I did read the draft. I thought it was very thorough, and I think it's actually something that would be helpful to the town to have.
Anyone else?
Do we need to put anything in there about some of the discussions that came up during the zoning rewrite for duplexes, et cetera?
I did include that as part of a paragraph, a paragraph three, as well as the notes that the commission developed two amendments.
Okay.
Around design guidelines and infill development.
Any other questions?
I can explain.
Thank you.
Is any action required on this at this time?
If you.
Do you want to let the commission look at it and maybe bring it up for action at the next meeting?
Yeah, eventually I'd like a vote, so that way I could say the commission voted to advance this. But it can be at the next meeting.
There are no other items? Moving on.
The only thing I would like to say is during the zoning rewrite, there were particular pictures that were brought forward, and I think it would be important, maybe somehow, to make sure that they are passed along when this hopefully is done, this committee. So whether it has to be part of the request or whether that's just a note.
I can include that, it has an appendix.
Yeah, something like that. Okay, great, thank you.
Good suggestion.
What do you think the chances are that this will get funded?
Based on past performance?
Yeah. I mean, like.
I think what would be important is that if it's meaningful.
Are you going to push this to the top, I guess, or?
This will be one of the primary requests, and I think it's always beneficial when funding requests are supported by the commissions, since this request would be actionable through the department, but it's directly coming from the commission. So you are all the ones that are requesting it, and basically the planning department would oversee any contract. So I think that carries a lot more weight than a general request. We'll see how the Board of Finance responds.
We don't normally follow funding requests, and we should develop a strategy as this thing moves through the process. And maybe several of us, you know, want to make a presentation to the Finance Board.
Or something might gets to that.
If there's nothing else.
Under permission, I have something. Under permission.
Yeah, go right ahead.
Can you give us an update on the Velvet Lane thing? I know we emailed back and forth a little bit. You said that people were working with stakeholders, working with the DOT.
We're not working with anybody yet.
Or talking, or can you give us some updates? Because you said there is some action going on.
I prefer to wait until the next meeting, when we have our first meeting, after we have our first meeting on this. But the idea is, and I've been engaged with the first selectmen who have picked this up, and there are other stakeholders involved. I'm not even sure who else is going to be at this meeting, to be honest with you. It's this Thursday, the first meeting. But my thought was.
And the meeting's with who?
Wait a minute, I'm not done here.
Sorry.
Okay, please, just let me finish. My thought was that this town doesn't pursue really anything under the tip at all, and I'm very familiar with that process. Virtually any municipality I ever worked in, either on the commission or on the staff, we always pursued DOT projects through the tip. And I think that we need to put together an aggressive plan for Route 27, not to widen it, not to really change the character of it, but to improve the performance of it, as I think you had suggested in the brief note that you had drafted to me. But that was the idea that I had, like, several weeks before I heard from you, and I started to talk to the leadership in town about engaging with DOT, because this is the only place there's a problem on Route 27. It needs a comprehensive solution. I don't know whether it's linking the signals. It's not a traditional project. It's far from a traditional project, and DOT is going to have to think outside the box. You can't take the transportation blue book and apply it to this solution. It's a unique solution, and it has to look at queuing, it has to look at synchronization, it has to look at lane arrangement, and it has to look at the areas like Velvet Lane that are identifying problems. So I think our legislative, state legislative delegation has to be engaged, press this to move it forward, and that's the overarching premise of this first meeting, to see how much traction we can get for getting DOT involved in a comprehensive solution to all the issues on Route 27.
And who's going to be at this meeting? Do you know?
No, I don't. I don't, honestly. I know I have an invite.
Who called the first selectmen?
First selectmen, yeah. So it's not a planning and zoning project per se yet.
No, no, I was just curious.
But because there is an interest, I know Lynn had an interest in it, I know you have an interest in it, all the commissioners do. I'm happy to report back, and I think there may be something we have to do, I don't know. But I'm happy to report back after the first meeting, and I think we're on the right track.
Okay. Chuck, I think it's a great plan. However, I think we have a very specific need with Velvet Lane, and I think that that shouldn't be just a side topic, that that needs to be addressed upfront. It might not be, it might not be, it'll be part of the overall plan, but it shouldn't wait for a overall comprehensive plan on Route 27.
I'm not suggesting it has to, but what has to happen is we have to engage DOT.
I totally understand.
Because there's a State Traffic Commission, PURA, not PURA.
OSTA.
OSTA, what is it? OSTA. Decision on this, and DOT has to be part of that solution. So there can be carve-outs in this so that we can address items like that, but until we really get a strategy put together on how we're going to fund all the problems on this, hopefully push it right out to state, get our legislative delegation involved, we have some very effective state legislators down here that I've worked with on past problems. When we needed to get Department of Health involved in a fire suppression, water pressure issue, I had some excellent support from some of our elected representatives down here in getting the State Health Department's attention.
Okay, great.
And so I think with the strategy we put together, there can be carve-outs, a good point, I'm glad you raised it, and, you know, perhaps many projects within the overall project that can be executed so that we can offer some early relief to the people at Velvet Lane.
Exactly.
I do agree that that is something they should not have to live with.
And I just have one more comment, and that is that I'd like the commission to think about how I believe we missed that the whole Seaport zoning, the whole zone, had a statement in it about interfering with residential traffic flow in the very beginning as part of that establishment of the zone. And how that wasn't carried through to, or highlighted in any of the discussions, I think was a big miss, and I think we should just think about that as we move forward with things like this, to have a process on where we go back to what the original or any subsequent changes to the zone is and any, you know, okay, but we said we would not do this, we would not do this, we would not do this, in the original approval of a zone. I think we should have a process for that, and I think it should be highlighted when these zone changes come forward to us, because people change. Time goes by, et cetera, and to go back however many years is, you know, in one person's memory is difficult.
Right.
But it was clearly stated, and it was a miss. So I'd just like to highlight that to the commission. I think we have to recognize that, and we have to think about how we're not going to let that happen going forward.
I don't disagree.
Thank you.
Thank you. There is nothing else? We'll move on to item C, zoning enforcement. Any questions, Clifton, on the report? If none, administrative review. Item one, application 25-165ZOM, Town of Stonington, administrative review, the installation of bio-infiltration area at Spelman Park, properties located at South Broad Street Park. I won't bother reading the map and block, lot numbers, properties located in the RR80. Evening, sir.
Evening. My name's Stephen Matil. I'm an engineer here with the Town of Stonington.
Good to see you again, Stephen.
You too, as well, sir. I work for the Department of Public Works. This administrative review is for the Department of Public Works itself to construct a bio-infiltration area at the frontage of the high school parking lot over there. As you can see from the plan that was provided, it's not a very significant area. It also disconnects 3.15 acres of impervious from both the roof and parking lot of the high school there. It's part of a larger goal of engineering to disconnect impervious area in Stonington, both to, like, improve water quality and to comply with MS4 permitting. Any questions?
Any questions of Town's representative?
Yeah, so just a couple. So the high school property is Spelman Park?
Yes, 176, yes, 176 South Broad Street. The Town of Stonington owns it, yep.
So you have a plan here, but it doesn't show where it's connected. You're taking care of all of the water from the front parking lot and roof leaders?
From the front lot and about half of the roof leaders, yes, sir.
Nice.
And it connects out of one of the catch basins near the terminus of the bottom of the parking lot. We actually have to build a diversionary wear structure, and it'll send the water quality storm specifically will be diverted through the bio-infiltration. It'll be planted with a variety of grasses and flowers and stuff like that, so relatively gentle slopes, too.
So this is an in-house design?
No, we had this designed by Trinkis Engineering.
Okay.
And it will be built in-house by our public works staff, so. This is actually being funded by a 319 water quality grant through the EPA, and as part of that, the town has agreed to build it as our cash match, so this was a win-win for us.
I'm sorry, I had blown up. I didn't see Trinkis. Got a lock on there?
Yep.
He is truly an expert in Stoneman Water Management.
Yes, he's.
As we saw in the recent application where he was a review consultant.
Yep.
In the act for protection zone. Anyone have any questions of the Town's rep? Hearing none, what's the commission's pleasure on the application of the Town's zone?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the application 25-165ZO and Town of Stonington, as submitted. No stipulations.
Motion to approve without stipulations. Is there a second?
Thank you.
Motion made in second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Pass the unanimity. Thank you, Stephen.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks for all the great work you're doing in the engineering department, too. I know the Town of Engineering really appreciates your involvement.
Thank you, my pleasure. Thank you all.
Okay, under all business. Application PG 2521CAM, D. Warilla. I think Keith Nelson is here. Evening, sir.
Good evening.
How are you?
Great.
Good to see you again, Keith.
It's good to be here. Thank you. The application I have before you tonight is a coastal site plan for landscaping improvements to the Warilla property, which is at 12 Skipper Street in Lord's Point. We were here a couple of months ago about a zone change in this area to allow this project to move forward, and so here it is. The project, I am not sure how familiar you are with the site, so let me just describe it in total. This is a built-up piece of land. It was destroyed in several hurricanes, 1938, 1954, '63 was Donna and Gloria in '85, and we've got some aerial photographs to show those. I'll be with you in a minute on that. But the project is to take the existing sidewalk, which runs along the perimeter of the property behind the seawall, to take that sidewalk out. It's a four-inch, slightly reinforced, typical sidewalk, replace it with a reinforced concrete sidewalk that would be variable thickness and variable width, thinner, narrower over on the east side and broader on the south side, and then to place granite blocks on the backside of this walkway to serve as protection for the property and for the house. It's a very simple project. We've got sections at various locations along the perimeter, and those sections are identified on the plan view. When you get over to the far west end of the walkway, we've put an angled wall that goes directly to the seawall. That concrete wall is really a means by which we will prevent reflective wave energy from getting onto the neighbor's property or anywhere else on the property. It will deflect wave energy either straight up or right back into the water, depending on the angle of approach. If I can just go back for a second to some of the aerial photographs, these are really interesting, and it's not often that we have such vivid depiction of condition. This is the site after Hurricane Gloria. The house has been modified somewhat to that time. This was the house back in the 1960s after Hurricane Donna, and you can see that there was a slightly different house here. You can see the front lawn. The seawall has existed for a long time. Landscaping, which has been attempted at the corners, has not survived and very likely will not survive in the future. The lawn is something that is fairly easily replaceable. This is the site before the restored, or before a house was restored on the site in 1960. That would have been after Hurricane of '54, and then.
Is that Carol?
Carol.
Carol.
And this is photographed 1953, so it shows the site with, you know, a fair amount of shorefront damage. Again, no house, and I don't know what the history of this house on the site was at that time, but this is a pretty revealing photograph, and this is after the hurricane of '38, almost 10 years after the hurricane of '38. A wall has been built, but you can see how devastated this site is. There's no vegetation that really can survive here, and so what we're trying to do is put up enough of a physical barrier so that we can stop the majority of the wave water that hits the site and therefore protect whatever vegetation is on there. The Warillas have maintained meticulous condition of their property, but they can't help what happens in the winter storms. The coastal site plan application that we prepared addresses each one of these issues, and the points that I have made, both in the coastal resource policies and standards, the potential adverse impacts, and the conclusion remarks are all addressed the same way. The Warillas are trying to do something that will help them to protect their property and make it more maintainable. They spend thousands of dollars a year just replacing the grass on the backside of the sidewalk. And the DEP wrote a letter, which I was disappointed to receive, because it really, it addresses bureaucratic policies that have been associated with the Coastal Management Act for years, but clearly have not demonstrated that they really preserve any coastal resources. This project that we're proposing does not damage any coastal resources. It protects enough, it dissipates enough of the wave energy so that the lawn can stay in place, and any landscaping behind the blocks will stay in place as well. The aerial photographs show pretty clearly what the site has been subject to in the past. It's a flat site. The DEP has raised an issue about loss of storage capacity in the flood plain and so on. The amount of storage capacity occupied by the volume of these blocks is infinitesimal compared to what occurs during a coastal storm. It's a flat site. Any waves that come onto the site go right over the site onto Skipper Street and out through the boat launch ramp. But the other thing that goes along with this is that the site is covered with eel grass after these storms, and so the eel grass ripped out of the bay and the Fisher's Island Sound that ends up on their property. If we were to try and put in massive landscaping along the wall, that would all be shredded and entangled with masses of eel grass after every storm. There's no way that any landscaping like that is going to survive here. So what we're proposing to do is make the best use of the property that we can. It protects and makes a maintainable situation if the storm is so severe that the blocks get moved, they can be moved back into place easily. And the eel grass can be washed off the site with hoses and rakes and so on, and the site can be restored fairly quickly. And if a storm that gets, that is larger than historical coastal winter storms and such does do find their way to the property, the Warillas will have to repair the property as they have in the past. This is a non-impact project. The blocks are low, they won't present any kind of visual barrier, there is no loss of habitat or threat against any kind of existing coastal resources, and that's the basis of our request for approval.
Any questions, Mr. Nelson?
I have a few questions, if I may.
Sure.
I've read through the Town of Engineering's report dated June 9, 2025. You raised some interesting questions, such as why the concrete blocks aren't going to be anchored. They're just set on top flat so waves could move them. Is that correct?
They could be moved.
Why wouldn't you want to have them more anchored or something there, Doug?
Well, the, it will take a fairly good size wave to move those blocks.
Like a hurricane wave?
Yeah, a four-foot wave could have a chance at moving the blocks. A five-foot wave would move some of them, and they will move as they need to to relieve some of the energy. This is not a perfect design that will stop everything. It will stop most of the storms, and if we anchor them and we get hit by large enough waves and the anchors get ripped out, then we've got a concrete repair problem as well. We'd rather not risk.
Right, but if they were to be moved by a big wave and they're not anchored, then you have a giant block moving around.
Right.
Possibly further inland, right, where structures might be damaged.
Could be, but we feel that it's better to leave a safety valve and not try to prevent everything. We will prevent most of the damage.
I noticed when you were describing it, you're going to change the width of the concrete walkway, like, in a number of different areas. Is there a reason for that?
We want to maintain an active walkway, the width of what has been there in the past, but in order to provide a foundation for the concrete blocks, we need to make the walkway a little bit wider, and then we'll put the blocks on the concrete. The concrete is going to serve as the walkway and the foundation for the blocks.
So it's not going to be a standard walkway over there? It's going to slim down?
It will narrow down on the east side, where we don't need as much protection and where the attractive use of the property is not quite as big as the south side.
Any other questions, Mr. Nelson?
But the walkway will be expanded from what it is now along the entire.
No, the east side will not be expanded. The east side will be about the same size as this.
Okay, so, plus you, either expanded or maintained, not diminished.
That's right.
Thank you.
You showed on the one side that the wall's curved because of the neighbor?
Yes, this point right here.
How about the side where the boat launch is in? Is there anything?
No, the, over on this side, the waves that get past the house, or I should say, past the property, are coming this way, and there's not much that this wall is going to do as far as reflective characteristics on the waves. The waves are already coming this way.
I know, I know it's on this, but last time you had mentioned the neighbor on the other side of the boat launch.
Crexio?
Yeah, you had said there's a number of issues there. Will that affect them, this cement?
No, it won't change any of the wave characteristics in this little cove affecting Crexio's house, and his house is right there.
And that area, the street in front of that house, I noticed there's always a bunch of puddles there after a storm. Does this help that anyway, or?
The puddles on Skipper Street?
Yeah.
It won't affect them. It won't change any of that. The waves that get over this wall are still going to continue to flow north across the lawn. The lawn is almost flat, as you can see from the spot elevations in the survey, and the water will continue to go this way and then flow out through Skipper Street.
How do the neighbors feel about this? Have they, are they aware of it?
As a matter of fact, the neighbors, do you remember when we were in for the zone change a couple of months ago? The neighbors were all lined up to participate in that process, and we wanted to try it on Dan Warilla's property first, and the neighbors wanted some kind of indication of how this might be viewed and accepted by the town.
How about the Wats Point Association also, or no?
Lord's Point Association is in agreement with it also.
Is it?
Yes.
Okay.
By the way, this is the Crexio house. This is the same plan I used for the zoning presentation a couple of months ago, and so you can see where this wall does not affect anything, any of the waves that are coming to Crexio.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions, Keith? Keith, does buoyancy effect, have any effect on the blocks at all as the water level rises, making it easier for the waves to shove them around?
It does, but by the time the higher water levels get to the point that they would be making the stone 60% less weight, the breaking energy is also over the rocks.
Okay.
So the, we do expect that the rocks, that the granite blocks will have to be. to be, um, reset on occasion. But like I said, we felt that it's, um, it's better to, um, have an energy release point, um, in the design. We can always maintain it. But this will solve ninety-nine percent of the Wirillas' problems.
Have you modeled this hydraulically at all?
I have not.
Okay.
But I have looked at the size of the rocks that the water has moved out in front of the house.
Okay.
And so I have a pretty good idea of what will move and what won't.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions, Keith? Keith, any comments? Oh, I'm sorry, Clifton.
Nope, no comments.
If there are no other questions, um, what's the commission's pleasure of the application of D. Wirilla?
If I can ask, Clifton, so I know one of the stipulations you recommended, um, would be any alterations or modifications to the approved site plan that floodplain engineer, CTD, the town engineer would review. I, I don't know, it just sticks in my head. I'd like to see these blocks anchored. I don't like, it just seems kind of counterintuitive to me. Maybe that's just me. I don't know if that's something we could add as a stipulation, um, if that would be something they would be willing to do.
I'd, I'd like to offer some suggestions here. Things that we have considered are to cast a small, uh, two-inch fourth, so curb on the backside of the slab so that when we set the blocks up against them, the blocks will be sitting against the curb, which will...
Some kind of stability.
Right.
Like sliding.
Right. With, right. And, and yet it won't, um, uh, it won't change the ability of the stones to teeter or something like that if significant waves hit them. Like I said, um, I would be, I, I would try not to put like epoxy-coated rebar anchors through the stone into the concrete because I'm afraid if we make it too, um, fixed, that we will destroy the concrete. And then that's a bigger job to, uh, to replace than to move the blocks. So if you're agreeable to the, um, the backstop curb, we would certainly put that in.
That makes sense to me. I think it's a, a, a good compromise, I think.
Thank you.
They're big blocks, twenty-four by twenty-four by how, how big?
Four feet.
Four feet. Big concrete granite, yeah.
Exactly.
So, Mr. Chairman, uh, with that, I make a motion to approve the, uh, application, uh, PZ two-five-two-one CAM D. Wirilla, um, with the following recommended four stipulations. Number one, any proposed alterations or modifications to the approved site plan as a result of comments from the floodplain manager, CTD, or town engineer shall be subject to review and approval by the town planner and commission as necessary. Number two, final plan shall be reviewed to the satisfaction of the town engineer. Number three, prior to the issuance of a zoning permit, the final plan shall be signed by the commission and recorded in the town's land, land evidence records. And number four, the applicant shall post an erosion and sedimentation control bond prior to the issuance of a zoning permit. The bond shall be either in the form of a certified check or a revocable letter of credit meeting the requirements of ZR fifteen dot four dot three. The bond amount shall be established by the town engineer after an estimate of the cost of installing and maintaining appropriate erosion and sedimentation control measures is provided by the applicant and approved by the town engineer, which work shall remain bonded for a minimum of one year from the date of zoning compliance.
Motion to approve by Ryan with conditions. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Lynn. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes, the chair abstains. Thank you, Keith. Next item under overall business is, um, application number PZ two-five-two-four SPA Waffle Pop, uh, D. Logan. Evening.
Good evening. My name is Emily Logan. I am the owner of Waffle Pop Sweet Shop. Um, I am here to request the change of use from wellness to restaurant for one-ten West Broad Street, Poxet, Connecticut. Um, pending any questions. I believe you guys have a packet with all of the information, a floor plan, my menu, and a bunch of other information.
Anything else you'd like to present?
I'm not sure what else you guys want to know.
Okay. Questions from the commission?
Just out of curiosity, I know the fire marshal made a couple of comments. Have you read those? Just for some changes, some smoke alarms, the heat detectors.
I don't know where that, I didn't receive those. Where would I get that information?
They would, they would have been forwarded to you. Adriana would have sent it to you. We can follow up with that.
Okay.
That's all I'm curious. Say, and that, yeah.
Have you seen the comments of the WPCA, Water Pollution Control Authority, that you're going to have to install a grease trap?
I have not. Um, I was open in the Velvet Mill and the, um, based off of the menu, I didn't have, and it was the same menu, I didn't need a grease trap.
Yeah, the comment is that, um, you'll be required to install a grease trap, which is not uncommon, uh, you know, for restaurants that are, are tied into, or food establishments that are tied into the sanitary sewer system. Trying to control fat, oil, and greases in the wastewater discharge. We have an expert on that, on this, right here. But, uh, that, that's another requirement, um, and, uh, let's see if there's any other comments here.
Those would come through the building permit stage when you go get your building permit. So you'd, um, you'd provide your materials to the fire marshal, um, as well as the WPCA as part of getting that building permit. So that'd be like kind of your next steps. Correct.
And I think there was one item here too about the sign being illuminated and it's not allowed, it doesn't meet that. I don't know if you were able to read that. She was?
I had a question about this, this sign. Like where's this going to be? The frame sign, like on the sidewalk? I, I don't, you know, I'm worried about signs like taking up sidewalk space. Do you know where they're putting the sign? On the sidewalk?
So, yeah, I was just, um, basing off of, um, the guidelines that I was able to have one A-frame sign and one sign, and then also based off of what the other establishments downtown with their sign, signage and stuff like that.
She's permitted the one sign.
And we, we say where they can go?
Uh, they're allowed on the sign.
Awesome.
They also be located on any portion of that parcel.
Yeah.
So it's, it's...
Sometimes they're like in landscaping or whatever, but...
So what do you make it? We don't have a menu. Is it, uh, do you just have ovens? Or do you have fryolaters?
Uh, well, I don't have fryolaters. I, I'll be making gourmet waffles, so waffles topped with everything you can think of just about, um, gelato, bolt candy, a bunch of, um, different retail from small businesses curated throughout the United States, so...
Sounds delicious.
It is. It's very difficult for me to lose any kind of weight, so have to taste test everything.
If you want to hear everything.
Yes. We do a lot of taste testing. So if you come in, you might get, you might be a kitty pig, so...
Any other questions of Ms. Logan?
Sure. What will be your hours of operation?
So, um, no earlier than, um, I have right now, um, no earlier than seven AM, no later than ten PM, um, probably not that late. I want to do seven days a week. It probably won't start out that way, um, until we ramp up with our business. So it'll probably be about five, five days a week, uh, Thursday through Monday. Can you try to get people for breakfast and people for dessert? It's kind of a little bit of both.
I wish you'd want.
Thank you.
I think it's great. I think it's really cute.
Any other questions of the applicant? Clifton, any comments?
The only comment was on the illumination of the sign, um, which is addressed. I just made the comment because of the...
I see that.
Detail. And then the only stipulation is to address the fire marshal and water WPCA's comments as they come up. So that's the only stipulation.
You may want to look into that grease trap item earlier. It can be expensive.
Oh, absolutely. I, I am aware, um, of how expensive it is. So, because I, I did look into it when I was at, um, the Velvet Mill. So I don't know if there's just different, um, a different, um, policy down in... There's, I'm sorry?
There could have been one already there.
Oh, there wasn't?
There wasn't?
No.
And the, I'm sure there's a grease trap there.
Yeah, like on the main hall.
I'm sure there's a grease trap.
Yeah, maybe.
Or they wouldn't be connected to the sanitary sewer. There's a grease trap there.
Okay.
Maybe it isn't for the individual restaurant, for the entire facility. That's why you weren't obligated to. So it serves the whole facility.
All right.
Any other questions of the applicant? Any other comments you'd like to make to the commission?
I don't, I don't think so.
Okay. What's the commission's pleasure of the Waffle Pop application?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the application PZ two-five-two-four SPA Waffle Pop, uh, submitted with the following stipulation. Number one, the applicant shall address outstanding comments to the satisfaction of the fire marshal, water pollution control authority, and town planner as necessary.
Do you want to stipulate hours of operation at all?
They're pretty comprehensive, seven AM to two...
Okay, so it's in the application. I'm sorry. Uh, approval, uh, motion by Ryan, thank you, Ryan, with several conditions. Is there a second?
Second.
Just the one. Is there a second?
Oh, she said second.
Oh, I'm just saying. And seconded, uh, by Mr. Morrison. Thank you. All in favor? Any discussion on the motion? I'm sorry. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? The chair abstains? Motion passes. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
You bet. Last item under overall business is, um, okay, I guess this is moving to August nineteenth.
Correct.
Just for curiosity, this is, keeps moving, what, what's the agenda?
I think it's the applicant getting their engineers together.
Okay. No problem. All right, so we now move into the public hearing phase of the meeting. And, uh, all regular commissioners will be seated for this. The way this works is we have signup sheets in the back. If there are any residents that wish to express a concern, either in favor, against, or just make a general comment on any of these applications, we have several public hearings tonight, you all have a sheet, just sign up if you wish to speak. The applicant will make a presentation. At the conclusion of the presentation, the commission will ask questions, staff will make its report, and everyone will have an opportunity to, thank you. You don't want to leave that alone. And, uh, the, uh, at the conclusion of, uh, the staff report, um, we'll hear from anyone in the public that wishes to make a statement on the application. The applicant will have an opportunity for rebuttal. We'll go back and forth with rebuttal until everyone has, uh, said their piece. So Lynn, would you read the, um, advertisement for the first public hearing, please?
You just need a motion to reopen both of them.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to reopen the public hearing for, uh, both PZ two-five-one-eightZC and VM Property Group and PZ two-five-one-nine SPA and CAM and WM Property Group.
Perfect. We can waive the reading?
It's already been opened.
Okay.
Good evening, Chris.
Evening, Seamus.
How are you guys? Thank you for having me tonight.
Fine, thank you. Motion open?
Yeah. I made the motion open.
Second?
Second. I'm sorry, seconded by Lynn. All in favor? The hearing is open, I apologize.
Thank you. My name is Seamus Moran, PE in Connecticut, and I work for H&amp;H Engineering Associates in Mystic. We were here before you last month for these two applications. One is the master plan for the NDD overlay on seven and twenty-two River Road. Uh, the other application is a site plan, I'm sorry, site plan and special permit application for the redevelopment of seven River Road. Mr. Sweeney presented last week, uh, I'm sorry, last month. I won't even pretend to, uh, uh, rehash what he kind of went over. We'll just kind of go over the changes between last month and this month, uh, in response to some of the comments we received. Uh, I think the first thing we'll do is we'll bring up Steve Motto from Dream Velvers to talk about the architectural revisions to the twenty-two River Road property, which is part of the master plan, uh, master plan application that we have. And then after we go over the master plan stuff for twenty-two, uh, I'll go into the site plan application for seven River. I apologize, I forgot my easel after Steve asked me to bring it.
Bring it, forgot it.
Uh, Steve Motto with an office in East Hampton, Connecticut, at ten, uh, Edward Circle. So we reacted to some of the, um, well, all of the comments we had, uh, last month, and we tried to implement everything that was shared with us, uh, by the commission. So starting off with, uh, let's start with the Marina. I think the Marina was fine. We really didn't get any comments back on the Marina, and this is what's under, uh, site plan review tonight. I think it, it serves the, um, the community well. It's got a good look to it from the river. We are going with an aluminum fence up front. I think that was one of the comments I, I heard from the last, uh, meeting we had. So it's in the site plan. There is a detail of the fence that we're going to be putting along the walkway. It's a nice, uh, uh, you know, it's a nice aluminum black fence. It's not the chain link fence that we talked about the last time we were here where the architectural design review board wanted a black, uh, chain link fence. We actually stepped it up a little bit.
So it's a wrought iron fence?
It's aluminum, but it's, it represents a wrought iron fence.
Okay.
Yeah. So that's, that's pretty much the Marina. I think we covered everything on that. The other comment we heard was about, um, policies of the Marina, what you can do in the Marina parking lot. And we do, I do have the policy of the Marina, good stewardship of, uh, certain areas where they have to do the maintenance and public, you know, people that just own boats can't go there and do oil changes out in the middle of the parking lot. They're going to have to do, use the Marina staff and get special permission. And there'll be a policy and a procedure that takes place if they want to do their own maintenance. It has to be brought over to the, uh, maintenance area of the garage. So that, those were the two comments, I believe, that we were talking about last month for the Marina.
Did you make any changes to the landscaping or are you going to...
Yeah, we'll, we'll get to that. Not only did we bring a landscape plan, but we brought the landscape architect.
Okay.
So we'll make sure we cover that too.
That's very good news.
Yeah. So, um, so I'm, again, this is a master plan, so we're not getting approval for this tonight, we're just getting the master plan approved for, uh, across the street, which is twenty-two River Road. This will go through another round of approvals when we come in front of you with the site plan approval. So what we did with some of the comments was we created some more green area in the front of the building, and we stepped up the moldings and we did some recess doors and we, we gave it a little bit more curb appeal. I think it looks a lot warmer. It's a lot more sexier than our original.
Big improvement.
Yeah. So, uh, Lisa, my wife, worked with the architect hand in hand, and we, we looked around in Stonington, and we looked in different boroughs, and we found some good architecture, so we applied it to this project. So, so I think we compromised on that. And then we, as you can see, the stairway got more significant. We, uh, it's not just a concrete stoop, it's got some brick, and it's got some width on the railing system. And again, that would be aluminum railing system going up. So I think the architect, uh, you know, stepped up and came through for us on this, and I hope you guys feel the same way. I, you know, if there's anything they can see that, uh, you know, a lot more brick, a lot more, a lot more to match the mill in the back, kind of blend it in. So with that being said, I, I mean, we have a, a material legend here on the side, so...
How much, how much grass is in the front? Where does that green space?
That, that's probably, that's probably ten foot wide by about twelve feet deep.
Oh, okay, great.
That's approximate.
Yes.
That's a big improvement. Much softer looking.
Yeah. And I think when you're driving down River Road, I mean, I was there today, just looking from my back to the Marina building, looking at that old mill building and picturing this in that space, I think it's going to be pretty magnificent.
Do you have any other questions, Lynn?
No, other than, and I don't know if you're going to get this, are you going to do any landscaping in that?
Yeah, oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, we'll get there.
Yeah, on the next go around, we'll have some.
Perfect, thank you.
Not today, though. That, this is, that's for the second, yeah, okay.
Thank you.
So, I'll just go into the changes at 7 River Road, which is the one across the street. And then I'll bring up Tom Garseffa, who's our landscape architect, who put together our landscaping plan. The changes are based on some of the feedback we received last month. For starters, what we did, we did have our traffic, traffic report. And we had said there's sightline problems, but we didn't have anything on the plan. So, what we did was we hatched where the sightlines are. So, you can see where we can't put landscaping. And that was a little prohibitive of any landscaping. So, we pulled the parking area back away from the street, another seven feet. And that gives us our seven feet of landscaping, which we'll get into in a minute. So, we're going to dress it up. We have the aluminum wrought iron looking fence that we'll have on our parking lot side. And then between the parking lot and the street, we're going to have, Tom will get into this, a U hedge, it's similar to what's out there now. But I think the concern that we heard last month was that we didn't want drivers to be able to drive by here and just look over an expansive parking lot. We kind of wanted to hide the parking area in the expansive asphalt. So, there's both the hedge and also some taller vegetation, some trees that we've added in some of the landscape areas that Tom will get into. So, by pulling this back seven feet, we've also reduced the impervious coverage. Another went down, it was a reduction of 0.43 acres, now we're at 0.47 acres. One other thing is a photometric plan. We added a note to it. I did speak to the photo company. The spec sheets do call out that this fixture at 30K is a dark sky, dark sky compliant fixture. It, it's, I circled everything on there on the photometric plan that shows that it's 30K. I'm sorry, that it's dark sky compliant. The only other item that we did was, Mr. Eiler forwarded us the draft regulations. And 27K is what is in the draft regulations. They have a 27K color option. So, rather than the 30K, we just went with the 27K. It's the, like, the lightest color that they offer. So, the photometric plan has been updated accordingly. All of the items that were selected for the fixture that show that it's dark sky compliant around here, they are motion sensors. And I think the draft regulations say it can be one of three items. And I think the one that we are selecting is that it's motion operated, that after 15 minutes, it goes off altogether, I believe it is. So, that's the fixture. It's, it says it right on the specification sheet that it's dark sky compliant under 30K. And we're at the 27K color. Last but not least, there was a minor drainage modification. This was just based on a recent conversation with the town engineer, almost as a belt and suspenders option. What we had before last month is this bio retention swale and a sand filter essentially with, that's wrapped, that doesn't allow any infiltration. The concern was that this trench over here, if it ever became clogged, it could potentially just become a holding tank for water, any stormwater coming off. So, we added a lower level under drain, as it means that if it were ever to get clogged, it would be directed out into the catch basin that the other system is going to. We weren't concerned about the pipe flow. It's more of just a belt and suspenders safety precaution that we added in. I think with that, I can bring up Tom to go over some of the landscaping, if he's ready.
Can I ask a quick question?
Of course.
Seamus, are you there? Can you show me where the dumpsters are? Right now, they're in the middle of the parking lot. There's three of them.
Yeah, so there's two back in this back corner. There's another two hidden here next to the bathrooms. And we have another two over by the Marina store.
And they're all enclosed?
Yes, correct. Oh, I'm sorry, one last item. When we shifted the pavement area, it reduced the parking spaces from 162 to 156. We don't want to get too many spaces, but we did hear the concern that there was too much parking. So, we reduced that by six spaces.
So, good evening. My name is Tom Garseffa. I have a license in Connecticut and have been a landscape architect for a long time. I dye my hair, but it's, you know. So, this is 20 scale. Everything else is 40 scale. That's why this looks like it does. And this is the south half. And this is the northern half of the property. You'll see the hedge here amongst the large parking area and a couple of trees. And then that edge right there continues to the driveway in this location with the sign location, the new building. And this little rainbow here is each of the plant varieties. It's easy to spot with this, is the only reason I did it, because we got distance here. But there are, there are only two trees over here. And the two trees back in this location, under the observation, they don't want to block out any view to the building. And most of what's happening here, this is a Hicks U, in case anybody knows about what that is. It's a narrow, naturally narrow, tall, but not fast growing. So, you put this stuff pretty close together, five feet apart is usually acceptable. And start at maybe three feet, the fence, the iron fence, so to speak, is six.
Six feet.
So, you're going to see that for quite a while. And then this, this could be trimmed off at any level, but it's going to block the cars once it's matured. This is another small hedge. I should stop. This is the same Hicks U over here to block this parking lot.
So, what's the planting height of that again?
It's purchased at, at three feet. And you could get it to grow eight feet if you want, but it stays narrow. So, it's not becoming a balloon someplace. And that's kind of a, it's a maintenance issue. If you want to keep it at six feet with the fences at, or five feet, it's easy to do. And, and I think...
And it doesn't get any bigger in diameter as it grows taller?
No, it's, if you look at it, it's three feet, three and a half feet. So, you put it five feet apart and they'll intermesh. If you see U's being planted to block something, it's usually this Hicks variety. It's not rounded.
And it's a conifer. It's, it's green.
Evergreen, yeah, absolutely, yes. Taxus is the botanic name, the first one. This little sign here has a carpet basically six or eight inches tall. That, that's not really a big issue, but it is an occupier. So, that, that's going to be an important sign, I would guess, for what happens. These, a little tricky to see with the, this is sidewalk here, the dark stuff. These are boxwoods, probably everybody's familiar with those. And those also have their verticals, as opposed to their big spreading guys. And just two bands of those. And then behind them, I sort of kept this equally balanced on both sides. And, and this sort of takes off the same situation. But these are, I have to look them back up because I changed the words all the time. Sea oaks. So, anybody familiar with that? It's a, it's a grass, has a fluttering sort of leaf to it. And it takes care, it takes care of itself in the wintertime. And these are hydrangea. This is, it's knockout roses. So, this whole thing is a balance between both sides, on both sides of the entrance. And then this larger stage area, I would call it, has some similar things so that they, they make the pattern. The biggest item is, is the knockout roses. There's some very tall grass there called Carl Forster, six feet tall, but stays very narrow. And just as a little bit of a background, and then this is more hydrangea and some additional sea oaks. And I tried to keep it as simple as I could, with some variety and something that's actually maintainable. I know how things get away from people and sound a bit good, but these things should be very easy to keep in line. And that's kind of the gist of it. I didn't mean to rush through anything. If you've got a question, I'd be happy to answer it for you.
So, like with the grasses and knockout roses and hydrangea, is it high maintenance?
I mean...
Do the grasses have to be trimmed down every year?
Well, you can leave them up and look at them, or you can just knock them off with a... A lot of times, they're usually with a hedge here, just hedge them out at six inches from the ground and let go. Sometimes they flop over in the wintertime and, but sea oaks is, is less dense of a, of a planting. And they're interesting. They, they sort of, they don't flipper or anything, but they're always moving with a little bit of wind. And this is a drive-by. Nobody's probably walking over here and doing it as a garden. But keeping it symmetrical here, making this pattern...
I like the symmetry. I'm just, I'm concerned that it requires a lot of maintenance. You know, knockout roses get cut down every year. You know, grasses get, get cut down every year. Hydrangea usually, I think, get trimmed back every year, don't they?
You can, you can whack them pretty good and they still come back. The, it's, it's sort of a which way do you want it type situation. Do you want a big, heavy, you know, planting? Or, that's not a very long, what is it, maybe it's 100 feet?
I'm not sure if I can tell you.
I guess my concern is, this is like an industrial, almost like an industrial site with a, with a Marina and a parking lot and a commercial establishment there. If it was a residence or, or, you know, a condominium or something like that, I would think that they would, they would probably be attentive to the kind of maintenance that, that this kind of planting would require. I'm just hoping that, that it's maintained. So, I think it looked very nice initially. My concern is that it stays that way. So, maybe just a brief care and maintenance spec associated with this on the landscaping plan.
That's easy enough to do.
Okay.
But you, you really can't get shrubs that stop. I mean, they're, they're wet there.
No, I realize that.
And so, this is only a height situation. You really don't have a waistline to worry about. It could get a little bit bigger, but this crew cut is what that really amounts to. And if you've grown knockouts, they're pretty reliable. You can always count on them. And, and yet, they don't mind if you knock them off about 12 or 16 or 18 inches from the ground. It, it's, looks fresh every spring then and does a much better job.
Mr. Chairman, we, on staff, we have people that will be maintaining property for both of these, if they go to fruition. So, they do have people that'll go out there and mow the lawn. We're going to have grass and we're going to have, we're going to have a dedicated...
So, you'll all the landscaping time, right?
Yeah, yeah, there's, there's probably eight or nine staff members.
That's fair.
And the new owners are, are taking this very seriously. You can see the look of the building that they designed. And it's not an expensive square box.
It's a substantial investment, so, you know, they should take it serious.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I just have one. And it's just, I'm having, it's little, so I can't see. Where you've got the light green shading all along the front, the road frontage there, is that going to be grass?
This should be.
Yeah.
So, this is sidewalk.
Oh, it's side, it's side.
And this dark brown is sidewalk.
Oh, okay. What about the light green?
Yeah, the light green is grass.
Light green, grass, yes.
Okay, I just wanted, okay, thank you.
Part of it is within the sightline triangle, so we can't have anything that grows between the sidewalk and...
Yep, I just wanted to make sure I was reading correctly. And then I have just one other question, and it probably isn't a landscaping question, but because you mentioned the sign, is the sign, can you, can you, do we have a picture of what the sign looks like?
So, it's, on the site plan, it's called out as a future freestanding sign. There is an architectural plan, Steve, I think, that shows what the sign conceptually looks like.
Is it in the, is it in the original architectural set?
Oh.
Because your packet only includes what was revised. It was in the original architectural set.
Oh, okay, all right. You didn't, you didn't change it? Oh, yeah, I remembered that, I liked it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
Very much.
Thank you.
Understood it, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions to the applicant? Clifford?
I had no additional comments. No comments.
If I may say, just, just from my own perspective and having watched the prior hearing with us, I want to thank you guys, the whole group, for coming back with very responsive plans. You heard every one of our comments and addressed every one that I saw and even some that we probably didn't bring up. So, I want to commend you for that and say thank you. Yeah, did a very good job, comprehensive approach. I think, I think it's a, a much better project as a result. Thank you for the attention to the detail.
The details were important. And the night sky compliant, excellent.
Thanks, Tom. Okay. No additional comments to those that have been provided. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, if you're concluded, Seamus?
Yes.
Clifford, you have no further comments, no further questions from the commission. We'll open it up to a public comment. There was no one signed up, but we'll ask if anyone wishes to speak on this application, either for or against, or make a statement. Hearing none. Do you wish any rebuttal time to that extensive commentary? I, I think if no one has any other questions or comments, the matter of closing the public hearing is in order.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to close this public hearing.
Motion to close public hearing, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Public hearing is closed. What's the commission's pleasure on both of these applications?
Clifford, if I may ask, so can we make a motion to pass both together? I noticed one didn't have stipulations.
I can do them separately.
Separately, okay, that's what I thought, okay. So, I know...
Public hearing is actually closed, I'm not sure.
Yeah. You have to, so...
Ryan, so there's no, there are no stipulations on the zone change?
Okay, that's what I thought.
And then there are only stipulations on the site plan, so you'd have to go in the order of the zone change.
Okay. All right, so for, first, for the zone change, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the application of PZ 518ZC, NVM Property Group, for the zoning map amendment with no stipulations.
Motion to approve application, PZ 2518ZC, NMW Property Group. Is there a second?
Second motion.
Second by Gary, thank you, both. Any discussion on the motion?
I, I just have a question on the motion. So, this is the proposal now, but it is a zoning change. Is there anything that we need to think about as far as the percentage of the property, of the zone in the future to be Marina-based versus residential-based versus, I don't know, different kind of business? And should that be part of this site plan? I mean, that's not what they're planning to do today, but as things change, do we need to make sure...
Could you provide an example of the concern? Just...
So, somebody, yeah, yeah, let's just pretend. 50 years from now, we don't want it to be a Marina. We want it to be a restaurant and Marina. And we, so we're going to add a restaurant in there. Takeout, takeout food. Now, maybe a grocery store. So, it diminishes the amount of, of, you know, space used for Marina, which we don't want that to happen during the current, current environment. You know, somebody wants to put, I don't know, something in for the residential units. I don't know, they, I don't know, I can't think of anything. I just want to be sure that we are very, very thoughtful as to what's going to be... I just want to be sure that we are very, very thoughtful as to what's going to be allowed in the future if there are changes, 50 years, 50 years in the future.
Procedurally, then, any change, new use, expansion of use, expansion of units, all gets rereviewed as if it's a brand-new zone change? So you don't have to stipulate what the permitted uses are now. The permitted uses are the ones that...
Right.
They are saying they want at the time, so marina and residential. If they wanted to add a third use of any type, restaurant, more residential, a greater, you know, percentage of residential or commercial or something, they'd have to come back and need to approve it as if it's a brand-new zone change all over again.
Okay, and that includes percentage as well?
Correct.
Not just use.
Correct. So in, in the example of 10, 20 years down the line, the marina gets smaller and they wanna get put more residential on seven. That entire process follows this entire process as if it was brand-new. And so if the commission were to deny that in the future, or you'd have to judge based off whether or not it's consistent with, you know, what you see for the site, but you could deny it and they would just have to stay with the status quo, same with every other zone change. So there's not, there's not an implicit allowance for expansion. Every single time they come back for any zone change, not just this applicant for all floating zones, you review it as if it's brand-new from the first go-around. And so you can, you can deny it based on any justification that you have, the same that you would be able to, you know, approve or deny this one.
Thanks for that explanation.
Any other comments or discussion?
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
Question, I don't know, maybe it needs clarification. So when we're changing this zone, this happened with the agricultural zone as well. It's two lots that are split by a road, and the regulations say a parcel of land. I need some, I need some, something on that. I mean, I, to me, this is two parcels of land, two totally separate parcels of land with a road in the middle. You can't combine them into one parcel.
It said one parcel, there's still...
Right, so, right, so the regulations say a parcel of land. It doesn't say combined a bunch of parcels of land to make an NDD.
It can be parcels.
It doesn't say that, it says a parcel.
It can be multiple parcels.
It doesn't say that, it says a parcel.
The other zones are multiple parcels.
I know, but this one says a parcel. I'm just saying, like, in my head, to me, that, that, I think this is a great project, and I'm not saying I think that's that, but I'm saying, like, our regulations say on a parcel of land, 150,000 square feet or more. And that's, it's just what it, I'm reading it word for word. It doesn't say several parcels combined, it doesn't say a road, two parcels with a road in between.
Well, the definition of contiguous, they are contiguous parcels.
But it still says a parcel. I mean, I'm just saying, this is just my head, I'm just, it says a parcel, not several parcels.
All the other floating zones are...
I'm not talking about the other floating zones, I wasn't here for those, I'm talking about this one.
I don't understand, I don't understand the concern.
Well, I think it's against our regulations.
Well, you've got the, you've got the block numbers, the map numbers...
I know, but, yes.
Identifying, identifying the tracks that are concerned.
Is the question on the definition of contiguous?
No, the question is a definition of a parcel.
Of singular?
As opposed to several parcels?
Yes.
I mean, do you care one way or another?
I see it as...
It's not really a parcel, it is several parcels. It's advertised, it says, I mean, there, you see the MBL numbers down below? Those are on the assessor's map, those identify several parcels.
But we had, I mean, to your point, I believe we had this same discussion when we, when we had the...
Agricultural用地 zone.
The wheeler one.
And there were two distinct parcels, and the word contiguous was in there, and we did some research, and because there was a road, it was still, but they aren't, they weren't two...
It wasn't, it wasn't because of the road, it was because of the way contiguous was defined for that location, for agricultural use.
Right, but...
So the regulation, the change, the text needed to be amended. It wasn't because it was bisected by a road. The bissection by road, if, the bissection by road doesn't change whether or not a parcel is contiguous. If there's a road in between two parcels, they are still contiguous.
Right, I agree.
This was, this was, this, that site historically was a singular lot as defined by the deed that had a road going through it. And so, it still technically was one singular parcel, but it was bisected by a road. So we had to change the language to make sure that it was defined as contiguous with the regulations, so that's why there was a textual amendment to that zone specifically. But for other parcels that are bisected by roads, like this one where it's two individual singular parcels, they're still deemed contiguous in connecting with each other. They can be under same or different ownership, but in the case of a zone change, it's not spot zoning once you cross the road.
Right.
And it's never spot zoning if it's a floating zone, so you can do that as many times as you want.
But these are two different parcels.
Correct. All of the...
It's very specific. The application says that. The advertisement says that.
But I, I think to this point, our, and I too like this project, okay? I just think our regs don't say multiple parcels. It says a parcel. It does.
It would not hold up in court. I, I, I understand what you're saying, but it's a, that's a semantic argument. The purpose of the text as it's written is to say what the minimum eight size of the parcels...
Yeah, it has to be at least a lot, right.
Is saying that it's at least 150,000 square feet.
Right.
That's the minimum boundary, so if it's 149.9, that wouldn't qualify. So you could jumble as many parcels as you want together, or it could be a singular one, but it, the purpose of that statement and the way that that text is written is just on the size for eligibility, but it's not calling out the singular nature of a parcel.
Okay, oh, there you go. You wanted to make a...
Any other questions?
I understand.
Okay, if there's no other discussion on, on the motion, there's a motion on the table to approve.
Has it been seconded?
Yeah, it was seconded, okay, sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
I'm opposed.
Chair votes aye, the motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I would now like to make a motion to approve PZ 2519 SPA and CAM for NWM Property Group with the following, following four stipulations, pardon me. Number one, the applicant shall address any outstanding comments of the satisfaction of the town engineer and town planner. Number two, final plans shall be reviewed to the satisfaction of town engineer and town planner. Number three, final plans shall be signed by the commission and recorded in the town's lands evidence records. Number four, the applicant shall post an erosion and sedimentation control bond prior to the issuance of his zoning permit. The bond shall be either in the form of a certified check or a revocable letter of credit meeting the requirements CR 15.4.3. The bond amount shall be established by the town engineer after an estimate of the cost of installing and maintaining appropriate erosion and sedimentation control measures is provided by the applicant and approved by the town engineer. Workshop remain bonded for a minimum of one year from the date of zoning compliance.
Motion made by Ryan to approve with stipulations, is there a second?
Second the motion.
Second by Gary, thank you both. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion to approve?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Chair abstains, motion passes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Moving on, item C. I believe we do have to read the legal app for this one, or just the notice in the agendas file?
Opening up PZ 2523 RA Latimer Point Condo Association zoning text amendment application for creation of the Latimer Point Condominium District LPCD floating zone.
I see Mr. Lally is here, to represent Latimer Point Condo Association.
Good evening.
Is there a motion? Motion to open?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to open this public hearing for Latimer Point Condo Association.
Is there a second? Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
No one's opposed, the public hearing is open. Good evening, Mr. Lally.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Ed Lally Jr. I'm a licensed professional engineer and landscaper with an office in Windsor, and I'm pleased to announce that 60 years ago this month, I attended my first public hearing. So I hope I can live up to the experience I've had. This is an application, as has been stated, for a text amendment to the zoning regulations, a new section 10.7, will be called the Latimer Point Condominium District, or LPCD. This hearing is for a floating zone requiring a future zone change, and will be governed by a master plan and a site plan, all which come under your review and which we hope to achieve approval at the appropriate time. I just handed out some supplemental information, including a map of Latimer Point from the Stonington GIS. The proposed regulation revised to address staff, town staff comments, a chart of the distribution of floor area at Latimer Point Condominium if this regulation change is approved and the balance of the approval process is successful, some data on sheds, which provide the basis of our response to one of the town staff comments, and recalculation of the impact on the grant list resulting from the rest of regulation change, and petitions signed by about 70% of the members of Latimer Point Condominium Association, and the owner of the only abutting residential property to Latimer Point Condominium. I'd like to point out that this is a seasonal community, lots of weekend visitors, people with young children, still working, and so it's difficult to get under short notice more than 50 or so signatures on a petition. We've discussed this, we've had multiple emails and conversations with members, and as far as I know, there's no pushback or resistance to this proposal. Latimer Point Condominium is a unique, important, thriving, successful, family-oriented, water-dependent coastal residential community within Stonington, containing 23.3 acres of land developed as individual exclusive use areas, containing 75 single-family homes, and many water-dependent common elements, including two beaches, a boat launch, two dinging docking areas, and many moorings to the residents, as well as boat storage areas, play areas, recreational areas, and overflow parking areas. The originally submitted floating zone text contained a stepped distribution with floor areas, so that we were distributing the floor area basically two big steps, and the breaking point was an EUA of 10,000 square feet. The average exclusive use area, which is sometimes called a not lot, is something that, if you went to Latimer Point, it would look like a lot. There's landscaping here and there, the blondered mode differently at different times. Some of them are fertilized and look great, some of them, not so. They look like lots, but they're not lots. They're exclusive use areas, and the owner of that dwelling unit has the exclusive use of that area, but that area belongs to the condominium association, which consists of all the members of the people who own and, and the exclusive use areas and the cottages thereon.
That's not so unusual in condominiums.
No, it is not.
Yeah.
It is not. The originally floating zone had a step at 10,000 square feet, so if your EUA was 9,000, was 10,000 square feet, you were, you were allowed a floor area of 2,500 square feet. Most of the property at Latimer Point is in the RM 20 zone, which requires a 20,000 square foot lot, and under the floor area ratio permitted in that zone, you would be allowed 3,000 square feet on a typical unit in the RM 20 zone. So we had a step at 10,000 square feet. If you were less than that, you had 2,500 square feet. If you were more than that, you were allowed 3,000 square feet. If I missed, okay, I meant to say 2,500 and 3,000. The total floor area for that distribution was 192,900 square feet. We, we're trying to get this application submitted and voted on before our annual meeting this year, and we, we went through the thought process and thought that that was reasonable. But after doing an internal review and study of several of the units, both small and large, we felt that that was not really very fair to one person have a square foot less than another person and be allowed 500 square foot less in their dwelling. So we've modified our proposal. We've dropped 15,000 square feet from the total we're asking for, and we now have a linear or more uniform development, so as your lot area goes up, your floor area ratio actually goes down, but your allowable floor area goes up. We felt that this would guarantee that there was not overcrowding at Latimer Point. Because we submitted this change outside of the 15-day, I think it is, time period that we have to submit it to the town before the hearing, we submitted it just after that, we respectfully request that the hearing be held open to allow sufficient time for the town to review this revision and have any additional comments. And thank you for that. The proposed floating zone, or the LPCD, is intended to provide Latimer Point Condominium with greater flexibility within the zoning regulations to accommodate the unique, excuse me, unique combination of town zoning regulations and Latimer Point Condominium Association controls that have created and continue to regulate the neighborhood. If you look at the plan from the GIS, you'll see that it is really quite unique. The highly densely populated area on that plan to the bottom half of Latimer Point, southern half of Latimer Point, is the Latimer Point Condominium Association. And to the north, you can see four of the homes on very large lots, they're very beautiful and very prestigious homes. They are within the fire district, which I happen to be present of for the past 25 years, but they are not within the condominium association. One of those people who lives next to us in a butts quite a few of our units has signed a petition, as I mentioned earlier, in support of this application. Our original application package included an application for a text change signed by the president of the Latimer Point Condominium Association, Martin Daly, who's with us tonight. The zoning text, which I indicated, had been revised somewhat. Reason for the request, a narrative addressing consistency with the plan of conservation and development, consistency with the existing zoning map and zoning text, and the actual development of Latimer Point, and conformance with general zoning purposes. Also contained an abridged history of Latimer Point, the first farmhouse being built in 1932, seven cottages constructed in 1938, zoning regulations in 1961, and the last cottage in 1980. All leasehold areas, which later became exclusive use areas, because for many, many years, there were just leaseholds, there were no exclusive use, because the condominium was not formed until about 1989, 1990. So in any case, all leasehold areas were defined by existing cottages and the little spaces that were not developed in between them prior to 1961. The average size, as I mentioned, was 9,315 square feet. Despite the size of those exclusive use areas that were not lots, the RM 20 zone and the RC 120 zone were imposed on the, on the subdivision. I could go over the reasons for the request for this application, but I think you've had that for a while, and if you have any questions on that, I'd be happy to go over it. I don't want to spend all night reading all this data into the, into the record. Also included in our original application package was a impact on the grant list that's been revised. Under current zoning regulations, the maximum square footage that could be allowed at Latimer Point, based on the current assessed values, would add $37,000 increase to the tax base. We're pretty much maxed out, according to the RM 20 and the RC 120. If you approve this change, we will be able to develop our properties in a more reasonable manner, given the typical RM 20 zone development pattern, and we would increase the grant list by approximately 270,000 square feet. I would like to point out that the required, well, the requested or the required, whatever, provided services, the services provided by the town to Latimer Point are very, very small compared to regular residential development. We plow our own roads, we pave our own roads, we repair the drainage, we replace the drainage. We don't have a single child in the school system of Stonington. We have virtually no services. We are our own fire district, and we contract with the Quambaba Fire District to provide us with fire protection services. So essentially, we do receive some police... So essentially, we do receive some police attention once in a while when we request it, because we have trespassers, that's very rare. Basically, we're, you know, as close to a cash cow as the town of Stonington is going to come, just to have, and we would hope to be able to obtain approval of this, which would benefit us, and it would also benefit the town, because I did not see any additional services being requested from the town based on this change in regulation. In any case, we submitted this documentation, and the town had, we met with the town planner, we corresponded with the town planner, phoned and emailed several times prior to our submission of the original application, and have recently received staff report on our application, which will go over how we've addressed the comments therein. The town attorney had three comments. The section should be numbered ten-point-six. Town planner advised me that, after I had changed it all to be ten-point-six, that there is going to be another ten-point-six, and I should stay at ten-point-seven, so we've kept ten-point-seven as our section number. The town attorney says the term exclusive-use area should be defined. We've added a definition early in the review text, on the first page, section ten-point-seven-point-two-A, and it's rather simple. It says, "As used herein," and I use that language because this is the only section in the regulations that has these terms in it. "As used herein, an exclusive-use area or limited common element is an area of land defined on the site plan, pertinent to a dwelling unit, the use of which is exclusively for the owner of the dwelling unit which exists on said exclusive-use area or limited common element." And then the second definition he required is, "As used herein, a common element is an area of land defined on the site plan which is used in common with all the owners of the dwelling units within Latimer Point." And I think that adequately defines, in accordance with law, condominium law, the two terms, limited comma element, which is the same as exclusive-use area, and the common element, which is the ball field, the dock area, the boat launch, the beaches, et cetera. He stated that section ten-point-seven-point-seven seems to be unnecessary. We changed the title of this section and went over that with the town planner, and I think we have agreement. We've changed this to say revisions to the site plan. Quote, "Any change to the following items shall be approved by the town by application for revision to the site plan. Only the Board of Latimer Point Condominium Association, Inc., is permitted to apply to the town for revision to the site plan." This section also includes items that were in ten-point-seven-point-eight that the town has jurisdiction over, and the town planner said we should not be referencing any LPCA rules, regulations, declaration within those sections, and we've eliminated all of that language. So we focused on, these are the things that the town has jurisdiction on, and the only comment about LPCA is that the board is the only entity that's able to submit an application for changes. The zoning enforcement officers suggested that if sheds are not counted towards gross-floor area, they should be limited in size and number. I took a hard look at the site plan, which you have approved almost annually for twenty-five years, and it shows every shed at Latimer Point. The sheds that are attached count as floor area. The sheds that are detached are listed on the spreadsheet I included in the packet, and the average shed area that exists there now is a hundred and eighteen square feet. And we used a hundred and twenty square feet, because a ten-by-twelve shed is a pretty generous shed, but it's not overly large, and it's consistent with what has happened at Latimer Point in the past. So we would ask that the language, "Only one shed is permitted per exclusive-use area with a maximum size of a hundred and twenty square feet and a maximum height of ten feet" be part of the regulation, which is in the regulation that I submitted to you in that The southeastern Connecticut Council of Governments reports that the proposed zoning regulation amendment is not likely to have a negative intermunicipal impact. We believe that this proposed zoning regulation amendment will have no negative impact on abutting municipalities, on the town, or on the demand for town services. As I stated before, we plow, clean, and repave our roads, we clean, repair, and replace our drainage systems, we have seventy-five individual septic systems, we pump them every three years, there are no children at Latimer Point within the school district. In fact, this proposed regulation amendment would have a very significant impact on the grant list without any increase in town services required, as I had stated. We believe that we will have no negative impact on the Latimer Point community, and fifty units have signed a petition in support. We believe we will have no impact on the abutting property owners bounded, because Latimer Point is bounded on the west, south, and north by waters of Fisher Island Sound. Along the north, Latimer Point is bounded by less than twenty-five percent of its frontage by open space owned by the Latimer Point Road LLC, and the balance of the land is owned by Andrew and Vivian McHillip, who have signed a petition, as I stated, in support of this application. Town planner had several comments. He asked us to strike ten-point-seven, and we've written that, as I had discussed, revisions and changes to the site plan, where I took out all of the LPCA references, the fear being that if they were in there, the town could be required to enforce our declaration and our rules and regulations, and we don't, neither of us want that. So that's been corrected. He asked us to, excuse me, remove items, as I said, to eliminate LPCA jurisdiction within this. He also asked for a definition of exclusive-use area and common element, which I had discussed. He asked for a revision to ten-point-seven-point-four-C, which was revised exactly as he suggested in his staff report, and I had discussed that with him, and he agreed that we had done that appropriately, at least that was my understanding. He asked that we remove ten-point-seven-point-eight-point-five, which has been removed, and ten-point-seven-point-eight. He had several comments on that, which we addressed those comments and moved most of that into ten-point-seven-point-seven. And then, as I mentioned, he had ten-point-seven-point-eight, C, D, F, and G should be revised, and they were revised, and they were relocated. Regarding the definition of floor-area ratio, we believe that Latimer Point is truly unique. If you've been there, you know that. Anybody who's spent time, as I and my kids and now my grandkids have, knows that. It's a great spot, and it's so different from typical residential development, or even your typical condominium. It looks like lots, it's not lots, it's very interesting, but it's also very unique. We believe that Latimer Point is truly unique and should be permitted a unique definition. We think that addressing the zoning enforcement officers' comment on sheds by limiting their size and their number, it keeps this pretty consistent with town regulations. If you have any questions of me, or if you'd like me to go over the narrative or any data therein, the reason for the request, or any data therein, or the abridged history of Latimer Point, I'm happy to try and respond to your concerns.
And what was your request on the extension, or leaving the public hearing open? Why do you want to leave the public hearing open?
You, my understanding of the rules, your rules, are that we're allowed to submit revision to the text, but if you didn't receive that within fifteen days of this hearing, then it couldn't be considered at this hearing.
Okay, fine. I understand that. Thank you. You went through it quickly, I just want to make sure everybody got this.
Yeah, I speak too quickly.
So the public hearing has to remain open?
Okay. So basically, if you have any questions of myself, the president of Latimer Point, or the president of Latimer Point, we're here to try and answer them. Thank you.
Any questions of Ed Loll?
I have one, just out of curiosity. I see on the town planner's comments, he had recommended striking section ten-point-seven-point-eight-point-three from the proposal, and it looks like it's still in there that the recommendation was the definition and calculation of floor-area ratio is already defined in the ZR two-point-twenty zoning terminology definitions.
Yes, and that was my last comment regarding the definition of floor-area ratio. The only real difference between yours and ours, and it's a historic one, is that you count sheds and we count only attached sheds. We're willing to limit our number and size.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. Any other questions of Mr. Loll?
I do. It's a pretty basic question. Can you give me an example of why you want to do this?
Yes, and thank you. And if I didn't make that clear, I should have, because that's exceedingly important. That's in the section that's titled "Reason for this request." Essentially, we are, we look like lots, but we're not lots. When we existed for twenty-plus years, prior to the beginning of zoning in this town, we had a pattern of development that had an average land area per unit of nine thousand three hundred square feet. When the zoning regulations were written, they had, is it RM fifteen?
RM twenty.
No, the smallest, you have an R.
RH-ten, RM twenty.
Right. Ten is a special zone, doesn't apply, we can't fit into that box. The next one up, I think, requires sanitary sewer. And so, since we didn't have sanitary sewer, they put an RM twenty on us, which meant that every lot had to have twenty thousand square feet, and every building's size was based on thirty percent of twenty thousand square feet, or no, fifteen percent, fifteen percent, I'm sorry, of twenty thousand square feet. So on a lot in an RM twenty zone, you could have a three thousand square foot house.
Right.
But all of our lots, they weren't lots, but they were land areas, were less than half that.
Right.
So our structures are limited to be fifteen hundred square feet or less, and fifteen hundred square feet is livable, but I wouldn't want to, there's a lot of time in there with a bunch of, even my family.
But you have for how many years?
Well, actually, we haven't. Actually, we haven't, because over time, in the beginning, we had zoning, but no condominium approved.
Right.
Between nineteen sixty-one and nineteen ninety, roughly, we had, everybody who wanted to do something, went to the zoning board of appeals, and we had over thirty applications to the zoning board of appeals, and they were all approved, because they were all reasonable, and they all had no effect on the neighbors, and they had no effect on the neighborhood, which is the criteria for zoning board of appeals. You have to be consistent with the development pattern of the neighborhood, you can't have a negative effect on the neighborhood, you can't have a negative effect on the abutters. So we went zoning board of appeals, to zoning board of appeals, to zoning board of appeals for, you know, from thirty-eight to, just after thirty-eight, to just before ninety. And they were all approved. So we have lots of buildings there, some close to three thousand square feet, that have been approved by either the zoning board of appeals or the site plan process since nineteen ninety, and we just like some equity, some fairness with the people who no longer have the zoning, well, they still do have the zoning board of appeals process, but we felt that since you are now developing overlaid zones to recognize and encourage the development pattern of unique areas such as Seacourt, and such as hopefully Latimer Point, that this is a proper vehicle to regulate this without a lot of zoning board of appeals applications or site plan applications, which we're running out of square footage that we can hand out to individual owners. In other words...
But as we move forward, the floor area ratio is going to be, the proposal is that it's non-void.
It's going to pop out, propose away?
I mean, it's going to be porous versus not.
Oh, the coverage.
Right, the coverage. So it'll...
So...
Yep, go ahead.
With that, Lynn, if this text was approved, Latimer Point, should they then apply for the zone with the text, they could still operate by their own FAR process. But they could also come back and revise the text to match the lot coverages. But since it's a floating zone, the regulations of the zone, obviously, then would be separate from the rest of what we do through the zoning regulation.
Right. And that would include any kind of coastal resilience zoning changes that we are contemplating? They would be... Go ahead. You're saying no?
There aren't any that would affect in this vein, no.
Virtually, all of the RC one-twenty zone land is developed.
Right.
And there have been buildings that have been constructed either adjacent to or slightly into the RC one-twenty zone. We have always had to and have always come to you for coastal area management, and we've always kept our septic systems out of there, we've always kept our disturbance of soil out of there, we've always kept our, you know, impervious surfaces out of there, because we know, and will still have to, come to you for coastal area management, and we know that the easiest approval to get is one you don't have to ask for. So if we don't put something in that coastal area management district, or near those, the small pockets of coastal wetlands we have, we know we're going to succeed. We're also under another jurisdictional element, which is the Department of Environmental Protection has about a fifteen-page or eighteen-page, small type, small margins, because I wrote it, wastewater management plan, which addresses all the septic systems, which I touched on, we pump them every three years. If somebody doesn't pump their system every three years, Latimer Point Condominium Association pumps their system and then bills them for it. And the reason is, and I'm a professional engineer, Lance Verrier, and I've done literally thousands of septic system designs the last fifty years, if we have a failure, if we have nitrification of Fisher's Island Sound, we're one property, remember that, we're one property. One person has a failure, and it creates nitrification of, we are in such deep trouble, and I'm trying to be polite about saying it, we're up to hearing it, because we as a property have to put in denitrification, and it's going to cost forty, fifty thousand dollars a unit. And so we're scared to pieces about that issue. So we have layers and layers of regulation, but the reason for this is we still have a site plan approval, though the site plan for this use, under this regulation, is stricter than the site plan you've been approving the revisions to every year, and a lot more information has to be layered onto that, is that correct? And so we're actually giving up a little freedom and accepting a lot more regulation in order to achieve some reasonable development pattern. And we don't have, we have some units that have been, we have quite a few units that are now either year-round or year-round capable at Latimer Point, and they've been knockdowns and total rebuilds, or leave one part of a foundation and rebuild ninety percent, and all of them fit within this. We have been careful to not allow our neighbors to overcrowd us, and so we're comfortable that this will not overcrowd the land. And for instance, if you have a small unit, and your one floor, so your floor area is spread out, it even says in the regulation, you will probably not be able to achieve this, because there's view restrictions, there's internal side yards that we have. You have no side yard or front yard requirements on our internal units, we have them, we have view restrictions. We have the wastewater management plan, which says you can't change your cottage unless you have a code-compliant septic system in the ground. So every one of those rebuilds has gone to the DEEP with a special, separate application to modify the wastewater management plan. Nobody can block more than ten percent, or, excuse me, no combination of units can be constructed or changed in front of you that block more than ten percent of your water view. So we have, we have regulations like you have regulations, and so we're pretty comfortable that if you allow this, it'll be fair and equitable and will not result in overcrowding of the land.
Thank you.
And in no small part, the management of this has worked very well. I think, to pay you a compliment, because you, you know, you've got excellent records, you know, you've got this whole thing in AutoCAD, you've got everything calculated, you know, to the hundredth of a square foot. Is there a succession plan for the management of this?
Yeah, Max Harlow is a good friend of mine forever, and he has, I've been feeding him bits of information over time. I was actually, a little side story, I was actually awarded the president of the fire district about twenty-five years ago as a punishment for speaking about, speaking out, speaking out against the then-board. They appointed me, even though I was supposed to be elected, but then the next year I got elected, and every year since for twenty-five. And quite frankly, I'm still working in, you know, my regular workaday life, as well as being semi-retired, and there is a succession plan, but I'm going to do this as long as I can, because quite frankly, I think somebody else might screw it up worse than I would. frankly, I think somebody else might screw it up worse than I would.
No, I just, you know, I think that, you know, any firm could come along that had competent, you know, professional engineers and Lancer Bears and pick up the excellent set of records and practices that you have and carry on.
They have been shared, they have been shared with the general- Ashen Younger, engineer, TJ Bressi of Bressi Associates LLC, who now, you know, I do all the grunt work and all the design work and all the interfacing, and he does all the AutoCAD work with me. But I don't have AutoCAD capability anymore. So he has all my files, all my records, everything that you see, he sees. Yeah, we're thinking down the road.
There is a continuity plan?
Yes.
Because you have done a great job here.
Thank you.
A great job, truthfully.
Try not to screw it up.
Yeah, very good work.
All right. Are there any other questions?
Any other questions of Ed? I think we have to continue this. Well, is there anyone in the audience that, if you're concluded, Ed?
Thank you.
Any comments, Clifton?
I have comments, but Carlene also.
You want to? Okay, Carlene.
Mr. Chairman, I am feeling iller and iller by the way.
I was worried about you when you stood up.
I'll be looking forward to seeing the revised, the bill I was suggesting.
Do you need a ride home or anything? Do you need a ride home?
You said revision. Up to this?
Yeah.
Here's a copy.
Oh, thank you.
Carlene, do you need a ride?
I hope you feel good.
I hope I can get home.
Carlene, do you need a ride?
I don't think so. Thank you.
Open faster.
Okay, anyone else wish to speak, either in favor or against this application? I don't know if one of us should go out and see her.
We can make a motion to continue the hearing and close, to make sure she makes it to her car.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I make a- I'm an alternate, so I can make sure she gets her last.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ellen.
She looks like weight on the street.
We'll stay here, just let us know what you want us to do with your computer and stuff.
Oh, perfect.
Okay. Anyone else wish to speak in favor or make a statement on this application? Go on, Clifton, comments?
Mr. Lollig went through all my comments, which is great. Just going back to what you were talking about with the succession and what Lynn's original question was about the intent, when I met with Mr. Lollig and Mr. Daly about this application, that was kind of the core conversation, was the future of Latimer Point or future proofing the procedure? Because over the past 25, 30 years now, the procedure of the applicant, or Latimer Point coming in once a year for a site plan approval is in agreement between the planning and zoning commission and... Did she make it to her car?
I'm just going to follow up.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Mary Ellen, that's very proud of you. I'm sorry, go ahead.
So the whole procedure, that commissioners that have seen this over the past few years, well, is an unofficial agreement, it's not defined by the regulations as a procedure, but it follows the exact same process as a floating zone application would, especially the ones that you've seen for probably Mystic Seaport, some of the NDD or GDD zones. And so, in creating the floating zone in this format, it allows Latimer Point and the Board of Directors to follow the exact same process that they're used to, but putting it into the legal language that can fit in the zoning regulations. So that way, if staff changes or if the Board of Directors change in any way, that agreement is sound through the terms of the regulations without us having to fall back on a procedure that's been done for 25-plus years.
Okay, so that will be formalized then?
So this is formalizing, this is formalizing the process that they've kind of followed and just putting it in the legal format that fits the regulations, which would be a floating zone.
That makes sense.
So this allows them to, you know, manage and expand the exact same way that they currently do, and they can come in once a year, as many times as they want per year, but it also puts it into a format that future commissions would be used to understanding as well, so it's better for everyone across the board. We didn't see anything, you know, in terms of like a significant deviation from process of procedure, and as Mr. Lollig said, if anything, this is more strict than how they currently operate, but it does provide everybody kind of a good path forward of knowing exactly what you're going to get should this text go through.
One question, just one quick question for you. If the density increases and there is no real fire suppression system down there, there's no hydrants, correct?
That's correct, but we are, have been for the last almost two years in negotiation with Aquarian Water, who is in the process of designing a new eight-inch water line that will come from old Route One through probably the fire station property, across Route One, down Latimer Point Road, under the railroad tracks, and down all the way to the entrance to Latimer Point, where there will be a fire.
That's right.
And then, the Latimer Point Condominium Association had a vote, because water, year-round water at Latimer Point is judged-
You have systems, right?
Pardon?
You have systems. You have sisterns there?
No, we have the ocean.
Okay.
We've worked with the Quambog Fire District, that we have appropriate-
I'm talking about for domestic water and what do you want?
Oh, yes, yes.
You shut the community system off, and few units have systems.
And there are one or two wells.
Yeah.
But with for fire suppression, we've had long-term negotiations and discussions with Quambog. We have areas where they know that they can reach the water in almost any weather to pump, but we're going to have a hydrant right at the entrance to Latimer Point, and the Latimer Point Condominium Association voted, all its members voted, and overwhelmingly approved a material change at Latimer Point to allow year-round water. And there are groups of people, starting at the stop sign, who want to have year-round water and fire protection, so they are going to install in accordance with a many-year-old, well, 15-year-old master water plan that I created, that shows where the water lines would go, what size they would be, and where the hydrants would go. So any piece that is constructed at Latimer Point will fit into the master plan. So we have, we've been working on this for decades. We now have Aquarian going to put the water in to the stop sign and a hydrant. We have people who want to extend it, and eventually, maybe not my lifetime, but eventually we'll have hydrants everywhere.
Any pumping or storage, underground storage tanks required at all?
No, no, no.
So there's sufficient flow and pressure?
There's adequate pressure and there'd be a sufficient water main for our-
Great.
We've had to do all sorts of domestic fire emergency calculations on flow and capacity of water.
I'm familiar with all of them.
That's in our contract with Aquarian.
Thank you. That answers my question.
Okay.
Are there any other questions, a motion to continue the public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to continue this public hearing.
Motion continue, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Public hearing is continued. Thank you, Ed.
Thank you.
Have said, anybody looked at the future matters on the agenda, have any questions? Hearing none, I think the appropriate motion is in order to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adjourn this hearing.
Motion adjourned, no second required, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Hearing is closed.